All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We were, we opened session around quarter of seven, actually. And we immediately went into executive session. We are now back out of executive session and we're into regular session. Could I have a roll call from, from the clerk, please?
All five selectmen are present and I believe town council and town administrator are still with us.
Okay, awesome. We have a pledge of allegiance. Let's see. Peter, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Okie doke. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome. Okay, awesome, awesome, awesome. Okay. We have some announcements and some other things. Before we do that, everybody knows that today's the election. It's underway right now and that we will be losing Mary. And I just want to say it's been a pleasure to work with her. And I am so, so glad to have worked with her and we're gonna miss you. And I just wanna throw it open so everybody can say what they'd like to say and we'll, and let Mary have her chance and let's do this up front.
I mean, Patrick, why don't you call people out? We do it in order.
Okay, Pete, Peter, you're up first.
Yep, well, Mary knows how I feel about her. She's known her for a long time. She's class act. She works hard. She digs her teeth into things. She's a good worker. Good co-conspirator, too, and she's gonna be missed.
Alan, how about you?
It's pretty easy. Mary asked me to run for selectman almost nine years ago. And I still haven't forgiven her for that one.
Neither have I.
And neither has Sandy. And we will miss her and I'm looking forward to hearing about her travel to in her new RV world that's coming forward.
Okay, Jim?
Just about in order for, I guess, a year and a month and a half. Appreciate the time with her and very quiet and when she has something to say, it's, it's meaningful. And I just wanna thank her and wish her the best and then hope she enjoys her downtime. Thanks, thanks a lot, Mary.
Rich?
Well, I'm really gonna miss Mary. Wonderful opportunity to work with you. Mary, you've got such a keen intellect. I've always been impressed by, you know, the way you really wanna dig into things and learn more and do more. And also your sense of humor is incredible. Such a dry sense of humor. You just make me laugh. I'll miss you.
And how about last, but not least, the town administrator?
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate all your time and, and support. The first time I met you was with giant trash bags filled with nip bottles. But it got better from there. Thank you, honestly. And I know that all the employees thank you for all your support and everything you've done and, you know, from keeping the town beautiful to having, having a level head, not letting people go crazy. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it and I think we owe you some fireball nip bottles.
Yeah, all full ones? Is that what we're saying?
No, some might not make it full, but.
Yeah, well, and we'll make sure there's a, there's a trash bag handy. All right, so Mary, is there anything you'd like to say?
Oh, I just wanna thank you guys. Your words really mean a lot and this has been such a pleasure working with you guys. This town really is so lucky to have what I consider the best of the best with all of you. We've gotten a lot done over the last few years and certainly back, back when Alan was just getting in there, I think I said, you know, run for selectman, but you're probably gonna be the most hated person around because this is a tough job and we didn't see, we didn't see things getting better anytime soon. And because we have the best of the best, our town is doing great now. And I just appreciate you guys so much. And who knows, maybe I'll be back someday. You never know.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is announcements and we'll go to Alan.
Hold on a second. I think on regular announcements, the governor did announce today that August 29th and 30th will be tax-free weekend. So that's a little plus for the economy coming back, hopefully. And also, we're all getting hit about the trash. I'm not gonna really talk about it a lot. My only comment is that if people can bring stuff in and sit and eat it and then not take the stuff back out with them or have things break it on the beach and leave chairs and stuff behind them, it's just not right. I don't know how people were brought up and I just don't understand it. And we don't have the capacity and capability to basically be everybody's nursemaid. I'll leave it at that.
Okay, next, Jim? Any announcements?
We have a CMW meeting tomorrow night. And that will be at 5 o'clock. Information's on the website. And if you, anybody wants to join in, they get in touch with Jay McGrail from Marion and he'll give them the Zoom password information, the, the meeting number and password information to join in. That's all.
All right, awesome. Peter, anything? Mary?
Nope.
Nope, last, okay, last chance. Next up, citizens comments and I, I think we don't really have anybody for that. And there's no citizens here to talk, I don't believe.
I, I would like to address that one more time.
Yeah.
I think we really need to start putting up the meeting information so that if people wanna join in, they can.
Okay.
We've been doing this for 12 weeks. This is my third time bringing stuff.
Yeah, well, Jim, let me, let me just stop you. Let me just say one thing. We're gonna be back in our room starting next week.
Well, that's just, that's great. And, but, you know, that's great. All right, I'm just gonna leave.
So, so the regular stuff will all be back, citizens' participation, all that stuff will be back.
Right, but we did this for about 12 weeks and everybody else was letting people join in and putting up the password and the meeting. And I, I don't know why we didn't. So it's over and done with. We're gonna be live face-to-face next week. If not, can we get a password and a meeting?
We will be in our room next week. I guarantee you that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? That's it. Okay, next up is board comments. Alan?
Okay, a couple of quick things. I had been, the veterans group had reached out to me a little while ago. There was some signs on the highway, you know, dedicating sections of the road to the veterans. And basically I reached out to Mass DOT and I got an email from Bill Travis, who I know for a long time now. And basically, hello Alan, I hope all is well with you. I'm happy to report that the missing memorial signs of the British Metro, Mr. Sannelli's email have all been replaced. Appreciate that very much, as do the veterans. We also had issue that came up about unfortunately the train there with the Cape Flyer starting this weekend. The, they've been going through replacing some of the bad ties and stuff. So they've been working at night because of the heat of the day. But they're trying to get stuff done in one or two days at a time. And I think there was an issue on halfway of that area. They are complete. They did it as quickly as they could. I was asked to see if I could switch back to the days and that didn't go over too well. And the last piece is on Cranberry Highway. I'm sure we're gonna get calls, people complaining in July and August. How come they're digging up the road and doing things? We had a agreement with the state as far as our 628 project to try to back away from July and August, keep the traffic mess at a minimum, keep the road going well. Unfortunately, Onset Fire Water District had decided that they were gonna contract with Landis since they're working on that road to do some revisions on their water lines and stuff on 628. And that's being done in July and August. So if there is some confusion, don't call us, call Onset. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't believe, Alan, that we, we, we spent the time to work that deal out. And now it's, it looks like it's going to be right in the heart of the season in what is probably gonna be the worst year for everybody out on this strip. It's just dumbfounded.
Thankfully, it's not major construction going deep in the road because it's mostly surface in and out, but it's still a little discouraging that we tried to do it the right way and now all of a sudden, nobody talks to us.
Well, it's four and a half feet in the ground. It's gotta be four and a half feet. The water line's gotta be down.
At least it's not 20 and 30 feet.
All right. Let's see, where we went to Alan. How about you, Jim? Do you have anything for board comments?
I just reached out to Heidi Churchill. And she, she didn't get the meeting info, so I, I tried to send it to her, so maybe she'll join in, maybe she won't. That's what I was doing here. I wasn't ignoring her. I was trying to.
It's okay.
What other comments do I have? I'm, I'm gonna skip that right now. I'll, I'll bring stuff up in the liaison reports there.
Okay. Peter, do you have anything?
Yeah. You know, there is an election going on. Nothing in life is guaranteed, including me coming back to this board tomorrow. So in the event I don't have that privilege, it's been great to work with all of you. You know, I go back the furthest with Alan and Derek and Rich. And then Patrick. And then you, Jim, and then Mary. I mean, actually, Mary and then Jim. And it's, it's been a privilege to work with all of you over this time. You know, we don't always agree on everything, but I think as a board, we do a pretty good job of disagreeing fairly amicably when it happens. And, you know, it's, you know, it's important not to, you know, project, you know, an infighting approach. So, and I, you know, question things is great. I think, you know, everybody here is articulate. They make their points. They, they get things across. And, you know, it's, it's just been a great, it's been a great eight years. I just wanted to say that.
All right, thank you. Mary?
Oh, I'm, I'm good for right now.
All right, and I'm okay, too. So we're gonna move on. We have appointments. Can you lead us through the appointments for your last hurrah?
Oh, I can. All right, I move that we approve Kristi Lyons to the Wareham Cultural Council for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Second. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry, roll call. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, 500. Next?
I move that we approve Jean Cunnaton to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, 500.
I move that we approve Sandy Slaven to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Next up, how about Alan? You gonna vote for this or you gonna abstain?
I will abstain as I usually do.
Okay, next, one abstention. Next, Jim?
That was a vote on Sandra Slaven?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Pete, Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Okay, so it'll be 401. Next up, Shelby Worthing. Is Shelby one of the people online?
Sherby.
Sherby's a longtime person on CPC.
No, she's not online. Okay, go ahead.
I move that we approve Sherby Worthing for the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary? Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, 500. We lost you for a second there. All right, so the next one up is the Board of Health. Now, last week, I guess I, I had to do a little homework on this one. Because I always thought that Dr. Gleason was a full-time member and he's not. He's an associate member. It was the old Dr. Gleason that was the full-time member. So for now, Lawrence Perry has to remain an associate member. So could I have the motion, please?
I move that we approve Lawrence Perry for an associate member position on the Board of Health for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Okay, motion by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, 500. Next up, Zoning Board of Appeals.
I move that we approve Walter Cruz as a member to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2025.
Okay.
That's Walter Cruz Jr.
It is.
Yeah, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, 500. Affordable Trust.
Move that we Sandra Slaven for the Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Roll call, Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick? Alan? Abstain, okay. So 401. Heidi Churchill, she's on. So maybe, maybe, how you doing, Heidi?
Good, how are you?
Good. So maybe, does anybody want to ask Heidi any questions or? Heidi, do you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay, I've been, I own a, a real estate company involved in residential sales. My office is in Easton, which was my old hometown. Now Wareham is my new hometown. My experience on the municipal side, I was on the Finance Committee in Easton for six years. I was chair for three. I've been in real estate for over 25 years. I was a real estate trust administrator for the bank in New York Mellon for seven years, so I understand the trust aspect and the fiduciary responsibilities. I've always been interested in affordable housing. I see it more from the developer's side than the municipal side. So it will be interesting to get involved in it from that end. Other than that, does anybody have any questions for me?
Anyone?
One other thing. I did sit in on the last affordable meeting, which was very interesting and I'm working on a whole list of questions. I'm gonna have to ask the members of it, of the trust, but I'm looking forward to working with everyone. I hope I get appointed. Thank you.
Awesome. Anybody have questions? Peter?
Not so much a question, but, you know, if you look at the guidelines for who's supposed to serve on the Affordable Housing Trust, it sounds like Heidi meets a lot of those qualifications through a real estate background. So I, I think it would be good for us to have somebody with some technical expertise on there as well.
Okay. Alan, Jim, anybody?
Well, just thank you very much for stepping up and helping us out.
Thank you.
I'd just like to piggyback on what you said. I think she'll, she'll kind of bring the real estate background to the trust and and I'll, and fill the trust out nice, give us a nice balance. And I appreciate you for stepping up and being willing to take, take the responsibility. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, awesome. Then could I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve Heidi Churchill to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2022.
A motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter.
One other thing, Patrick, I don't have the, the thing to sign in here, so we'll need to catch you to pick one up, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get that done.
Okay.
All right, we could, we, you know, it's, next week we'll be in better shape when we're in our own room. That'll make everything
Oh, yeah.
A lot, a lot easier, so. All right, so roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, 500. Thank you, Heidi. Welcome.
Now, you'll have to go down to the town clerk's office, too, correct?
Yeah, after we sign the paper, she can take it to the clerk's office and get sworn in.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Thank you again.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. Let's see, what do we got left? We got the Recycling Committee.
I move that we approve Anne Marie Brooks as a member to the Recycling Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, 500. Next?
I move that we approve Earl Russell as a member to the Recycling Committee for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, 500. All right, that takes care of that. Now, let's jump down to, because we have this gentleman waiting. Let's jump down to the discussion and vote on the CHAP release for 33 Swiss Beach Road. All right, so, so I'm gonna let council. Well, maybe not. Maybe we didn't, we really haven't talked about it in open session here, so let's, anybody got anything they wanna say relevant to the release of this 40B?
My comment, this is Alan, is that, as, as you know, we're kinda disappointed that we keep losing affordable housing units for different reasons. You know, the way CHAP works, it really doesn't really help us at all. And they really out of proponents for the cities and towns. That said, because of the process and the system, I don't believe we have any choice but to go ahead and, and execute the document.
Okay. Jim, you have anything? Peter, anybody?
Well, I, I just, well, go ahead. You wanna go first, Peter?
No, no, you're up, Jim.
Okay, so just so we're, we're all on the same page. They first notified the town November 12th of 19 about the process of putting the house in the market. And they went through what they were required to do for the number of days and then with an extension. And as, as was explained earlier, and, and I think we all agreed to begrudgingly so, that because of where we are as in a market, then they're allowed to sell it because it's below what the highest value was considered at the time when they, the agreement. So, you know, again, we don't have a choice and we move on.
Okay, Peter, you have anything?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not thrilled to have to do it, but I don't see any alternative.
All right, Mary?
Yeah, same. We have, there's nothing we can do. It's unfortunate.
Okay, and I'm gonna let Mr. McCallough in so he can speak.
Hello. Yeah, I was, I represent the homeowner, so I'm not from CHAP, but I understand what you guys are.
Could you speak up, please? We can't hear you.
Oh, my apology. Am I not? You got me now?
That's better.
That's better? Okay, yes, no, I understand what you guys are saying. I have, my apologies. It impacts negatively Wareham. I only represent the homeowner to try and sell the property. So I understand where you're coming from with CHAP and that the markets are depressed right now, but that's all.
Okay. All right, so could I have a motion, please?
I move that we release the CHAP, the restriction at 33 Swiss Beach Road, Wareham.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Is there any more discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, no. I'm not gonna ever, like I said, vote for another one of these releases. And I don't care whether we have an agreement or we don't have an agreement. As far as I'm concerned, this has gotta change and the, and until we start standing up and making some kind of a, some kind of a position on these things, this is gonna continue to happen to us. And I'm just not interested in voting for, for this, this release. All right, so the motion passes 410.
I agree, Patrick, and thank you.
And I think we need to get this signed pretty quickly, I believe, for the homeowner, correct?
All right, I have to sign it. I'll come in tomorrow and sign it.
Okay, perfect.
Right?
And then let's reach out to the, the gentleman, Mr. McCallough, as soon as that's done. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCallough.
Thank you for your time.
All right, next up is the renewal of a seasonal liquor license under the provisions of Chapter 138 for the year 2020. Could I have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the Common Vic All Alcoholic Beverage License for Project Half Shell INC., DVA Cohog Republic.
Motion by my, made by Mary. It was seconded by Peter. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, 500. Okay, next up, COVID update. How are we doing, Derek? What do you got?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we're, we've been trending lower as most of the other, other places. We are seeing nationwide a little, a little uptick as there's some openings, so you know, obviously that's something to watch. And just so you know, we've toned down the COVID-19 Emergency Response Team meetings. We're doing every Wednesday now rather than seven days a week, unless there's something that needs to be moved forward quickly. Mr. McDonald and Skippy Wilcox, the Wilcox have been working on the reimbursement from the CARES Act. They submitted for 150,000, which is fantastic. We have been approved right now for, I believe, about 128,000. Alan will probably give the exact number, but.
I want to cheat a little.
And just so people understand, there was an award for total of just under a $1 million, but that's only for COVID-19 expenses that were not already in your budget. So you can't just take people's salaries and such as that. One community spent $770,000 on, on Chromebooks, but that was because they did not have any. Our school, we're lucky enough to have great leadership from Dr. Shaver Hood, where we already had the Chromebooks and they'd been way ahead of it, which helped our students. And frankly, I'd rather that our kids weren't waiting and were, were able to link up right away. Also, people should understand we will continue to submit. We can do this through December. Everybody needs to understand this is, this is not found money. This is money that was actually expended. And it's going to, it's a reimbursement. So it's not money that we can spend right away. It goes right into the general fund. So we probably won't get this money till after fiscal year 21 starts. So we wouldn't see that till the, this money in any sort of factor until fiscal year 2022. So what it will do is help with potentially the receipts if we're, we're lagging. You know, if we're down a couple hundred thousand, that's, that would help out by getting this money back. So while it's great, we're very lucky to have it. I think Plymouth County's doing an excellent job administering it. They're actually keeping us honest instead of just giving everybody the money and telling you, you gotta audit yourself. They're actually approving and going through it, which makes it, makes us much more likely to not have to worry about the, a federal audit on that, on that portion, if you will. And I'm talking outside of our normal audit.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the main update for, for COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. You did, you did make an announcement about the library having pickup now, drive.
Correct, yeah. They're doing curbside delivery. We sent out the announcements. Go, you can go to our website or or their website to check it out. And I'm very happy they're doing it. They have been pushing for it. The MBLC made some changes, I know, about a, a week ago, so George was, George was happy and he and his staff have been, have been chomping at the bit, if you will, to get going.
Okay. Excuse me, Jim?
What's going on the COVID?
Yeah, you can get, sure, what do you have to say? Go ahead, go ahead.
Just wondering if we've uh, we're able to do anything, reaching out to the merchants uh, in, on Main Street and Merchants Way and um, working with them for some outdoor dining.
The only one that showed interest is El Mariachi, and they uh, they have picked up the paperwork that they have to sign, including the identification agreement. And uh, they have that, they're filling that all out and submitting it back to us, and once we get that, we'll go through it and uh, move forward. What we originally wanted to do just along the sidewalk on the side of their building, we told them they could uh, they could potentially use that uh, that road space too, if you will.
Which road space? The actual road between the buildings or out back?
Between the buildings. Out back, I'm a little more reluctant because you'll have actual traveling going right past there. You'll need, you'll need to make sure you have more barriers to set up something, something back there. And they're already um, they've already using up one of the spots of that dry storage shed and such, so.
Well, yeah, there would be a spot. So that's, that's a pretty large area there. So that would be potentially uh, usable by other, I would think, merchants. I mean, when you look at that whole um, streetscape there.
Yeah, if you look at the six-foot distancing, really ten feet when you go between the chairs, I was trying to figure it out when I was going through there, but I thought that they could get about uh, about six, six sets of uh, of big tables easily between them without worrying about uh, social distancing and keeping some of the ADA accessibility too.
Now, when you, when you talk, this, when you talk six feet between tables, you're talking the physical table, you're talking the chairs between the tables.
I'm, my, my belief for, for safety is between the chairs. That's, that's the way I look at it, because if you're talking middle of, middle of table to middle, middle of table, that's nothing. If you're talking, if you're talking end to end, especially with somebody that might be, have a little extra room in their belly, you know, kicking that out.
Uh, it has to be between the chairs.
Excuse me, bellies?
Has to be, has, it has to be between the chairs, because otherwise you can't get such a social distance to six feet, there's just no way.
Correct.
The, the reason I ask is that it says, you know, between tables.
Yeah, but they mean the chairs, I mean, they, they have to mean the chairs. Because, because you're, remember, it says that you have to keep a six-foot distance. So if you're not between the chairs, you can't keep the six-foot distance. And that's up to our Board of Health to make that call anyway.
And I saw the uh, I saw the interview with uh, with Mr. Soro from Gateway Tavern, and he was doing, he was doing above and beyond like that, you know, having excess space, which I really appreciate. He's being sa, he's being safe for his customers and his employees as well. And that's what I think we should expect, so.
Yeah, okay, that's the best thing anyway. All right, I have one thing. I would like Alan um, to do some work for me, for us, for, not for us, but uh, for the slide. I, I, we've been back and forth with them all week. Um, they, they, you know, they're closed still.
If you wanna wait, Patrick, till uh, we do the, those stuff, I have answers for, for you on that as well.
Oh, you do? Okay, well, that's good, 'cause I was gonna give you a job to go find some answers. 'Cause one of the questions they asked, which I think is a legitimate one, is anybody, you know, being a proponent for them? And I figured that I could sick you on some of those people at the state level to be a proponent for them, you know?
I have some good news for them.
Okay, good. Uh, well, that's good news.
Mr. Chairman, my, my answer wasn't gonna be, wasn't gonna instill a lot of hope with her, because I was gonna, you know, I, I don't believe Governor Baker picks up, picks up when Derek Sullivan calls in, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah. She, that he doesn't? Come on, Derek, I thought you were right. I thought you were in the know, man, I thought you were there. All right, uh, okay, so we'll move on and then we'll come back to the, to Alan and afterwards. Unless you wanna do something now, Alan, you wanna do it now or you wanna wait?
Well, if you want, we can do it, as you know.
You can do it under COVID.
Okay, well, basically, Water Whiz had reached out to the town, uh, as did several restaurants, which we worked with to try and get that, the ruling to get the capacity issue, you know, eliminated from the restaurants opening on the outside and the inside, and strictly by social distancing, except uh, and wearing masks. Uh, but we did get, I think it's Patricia, I forget her last name, I think it's Kells, maybe, uh, sent us an email uh, expressing her real concern, which was legitimate, that basically they have an eight-week window in order to make money, which is basically July and August. And that's their season. Uh, and I don't know any business that can lose a whole year's worth of revenue and come back the next year and be solvent. So she did reach out and ask for help, uh, I believe, if Derek remembers. I think she mentioned the town of Yarmouth had passed something to their water park, but we know whatever Yarmouth did, we believe it's illegal, because it's against the, the state border health regulations. I don't know what happened on Monday with the Board of Select on Yarmouth. Uh, but I took what she gave me, and I basically wrote to the Association uh, and spoke with Jeff Beckwith on Monday, and asked him, you know, to, if he could please bring to the meeting that we do every Tuesday with Lieutenant Governor, uh, a request for some kind of relief for Water Whiz in particular. And I explained what their business was, what the issue was, and I didn't expect them to actually bring it up to the meeting today, but just forward to Lieutenant Governor. Well, what happened today was the first item being discussed after the initial uh, information that they downloaded was exactly the Water Whiz issue, and uh, Karen, basically Lieutenant Governor, her response back was, we already, we know about this, thank you, and we're working on it, and we'll be contacting Water Whiz shortly, and I basically asked if, if they couldn't get around the border health issues for safety, could they consider some kind of financial relief to businesses such as this, and the answer was yes. So we've done as far as we can go, and we, we stepped up and, you know, represented us, you know, the town for her.
Well, that's very nice. That's, that's great, Alan, that's absolutely great. Thank you very much for, for handling that, that's terrific.
It's what we do all the time anyways, people may not know that.
Well, they don't, but it's nice when they hear it, and that's why I thought it was a good thing to uh, to go forward. All right, um, next up would be uh, the vote to extend the charter review committee. Now, I'm, I'm suggest that we allow them to go through October. Um, whether we establish a new one completely, I write this minute and put the members that are on it now on there. But the reason why I say that is just because, let's face it, um, they didn't get any of their stuff done because we canned it at town meeting, and not only did we not get the stuff done, but we um, um, we didn't, they didn't have any time to really uh, finish it all, they couldn't even meet for a while. So I, I'm suggesting that we go ahead and um, ask council how we're gonna handle this. Um, whether we just, whether, we obviously, I mean, I know it has a sunset in it, and we talked about that before, but why can't we just establish a new charter review commission that will go through, let's say, November? You know, and that'll give them, and that'll give them time to do what they need to do. Uh, Rich, does that work for you?
Uh, yeah, just call them uh, the ad hoc charter review commission, so that you don't leave yourself open to the attack that, well, the charter says this, the charter says that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
They're not the one established by the charter, really, but they're still doing the work.
Okay, so um, does anybody have a problem with it? Anybody wanna speak up?
No, all I would suggest is we, we can keep them in place until after the finish of a fall annual town meeting. Just in case.
That's a good suggestion.
Just in case it runs a little longer than normal.
Okay, that's a good suggestion. Anybody else? All right, can you make me a motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead, Jim.
Are we gonna be having a uh, special town meeting in August?
I don't believe so.
Can you give the report? And I'd like to hear, you know, what they've done and what they'd like to do. Um, I'd like them to come back to us at this point, at least send us the report that they would have done. Um, and, and as we've discussed previously, and again was recommended, is that, you know, this committee by, by statute is, is all done, but we can appoint another, an ad hoc, as this, the council said, review committee to, to that date, and everybody who was on it would, I would think, would have to say, I wanna be reappointed. I, I would like to be on the board. And um, we, we don't have to stick to the same format either as what the charter review uh, requirements are in the uh, the town charter. Am I correct?
Ken? Um, yeah, I mean, you know, the review was review, uh, but go ahead, Alan.
Uh, my one comment would be that the charter review committee would have had a report for spring town meeting, and they would have submitted it to the uh, moderator. So we can reach out and ask the moderator if she has a copy, and we can basically present it in one of our meetings on the agenda and go through it and read it to the public, 'cause that's done. They had that, they had that prepared.
Yeah, they had it prepared, but their, I, their articles never got, obviously, and I don't believe, and we can ask Derek this, but I don't believe that we're gonna have an August town meeting. I don't, I don't really see any reason for it. Do you, Derek?
You watch.
Um, no, I don't have anything from my end to, I couldn't wait till October.
We're, we're not gonna have the dollar amounts in the state realistically till October, hopefully not November. So anything we need to correct and fix, it's gonna be a long time off.
Right.
Yeah, just so everybody understands, we just received notification from um, from the Division of Local Services that the Commonwealth for the next two months is dispersing uh, cherry sheet revenues based on the fiscal 2020 budget. So they're trying to just get some money out and such, but that tells us we're not gonna see anything in July or August, so uh, I, I'm legitimately hoping that they have something by uh, by October, because uh, you know, that's when we go through all our tax rate setting and stuff like that to, to be ready for.
I think we have um, a, a bit of uh, material to go over related to, to zoning and other articles that were non-monetary. Um, I'd hate to stack them up and have a bear of a meeting come October personally. Um, one of the things that we have on the agenda is the um, CMW agreement. I'd hate to push that off till November and really get stuck, and I don't wanna be in a position to have to make a decision because we are stuck, all right? Um, there are some things we should get done, and you know, people, and it's up to us if we wanna have a meeting. I just want you to know that. Um, not to be disrespectful to Mr. Sullivan. I mean, he can always put things on if he's interested, as could other boards.
We all know that, Jim.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear. These are my thoughts, this is my feelings.
Okay. Uh, Peter, you have anything?
I mean, you know, as you know, initially, I, I didn't support the, the charter review committee, and even tried to get town meeting to kill it off. Uh, I was pleasantly surprised with the work they did. Uh, you know, I'd like, I'd like to see that same bunch of people that are on there now come back, uh, if that's at all feasible. Uh, 'cause I think they, I think they had uh, the, some good people on there, I think they had a different mix of expertises from people who'd been in government for a while, and understood it from, you know, how you try to operate a town perspective uh, via the former town clerk. Uh, you know, we, we had uh, you know, Mrs. Whiteside in there, uh, you know, there's a, you know, they did a good job, and uh, I'd like to see it come back. Uh, you know, if there's any discussion over how many uh, you know, need to be on it, that sort of thing, I don't think it needs to be a huge committee. I always thought nine was a little crazy anyway.
Well, I think we should set up the committee now, and then uh, we'll ask whoever wants to rejoin it, and then uh, um, uh, and then uh, bring that back at another meeting, you can bring that back to add the actual individuals.
The, the way this works is that there's a lot of work involved with the charter, and everybody takes a section. So the nine members are okay, but I believe one of the members uh, is not, as I already said, they don't wanna come back, and I think they were down to seven, so if you wanna, if you wanna sit and cut it to seven, which are the existing, I don't have an issue, just make sure anyone that's on it has the opportunity to come back.
Yep, I think that's the way we should handle it. Uh, could I have a, let's have a motion to create the committee, ad hoc committee.
As long as, as long as it's an elected person, right?
Excuse, what?
As long as it's not an elected select person.
Yeah, select person.
Well, I mean, we can, we do have the authority to put ourselves on committees, so that's, that's, that's maybe something to talk about.
Well, that's, that's kinda what I was trying to get to without, you know, maybe we'd want a member of, or two of the selectmen on there too. Um, to balance it out, I mean, we have no say. It's no longer the charter review committee by charter as required and by mass general law, I guess, too, right?
Yes.
Um.
Well, we could stay with nine and put two selectmen on it if you want.
The only problem I have when we put selectmen on committees, it tends to uh, repress what people will say and do. The charter review committee really needs to be an open committee with, with no hesitation, what they say being, you know, disseminated out after the fact. It's only, it's one of the committees that I've been on before, I was, before this one, and specifically, there were no selectmen involved, they basically came to the first meeting as we did on this one, and that was it, they stayed away, and you were able to get it done. So I would not be, I would not be in favor of putting select on this particular committee.
That's what I was trying to say, 'cause the person that's on there now
Oh my God.
may be a select person.
Well, that person would not be a, I don't believe we would, if that happened.
My pants.
Well, that's where I was kinda trying to go to, in the sense that, you know, who, who could be on it, who couldn't be on it?
No, where are you, where are you going?
Yeah, we would basically, if, if that happens, if Mrs. Whiteside's, like, gets reelected, then she would not, I would not want to see her on that committee.
Okay, so I, I think that's a good thing to think about, though, is uh, having a um, a selectman on there being maybe kind of intimidating to the, to the group. I can see that happening. I remember when we had him in the past. Um, it could be problematic, matter of fact, I sat on one of them once, and um, it, it can be difficult. So, you know, that's something to take into consideration. What does anybody else think?
Um, I don't, I don't, I don't really have an opinion. I could, I could see it being beneficial or detriment, so it's, and, and they're open, so anyone can go if you want to, if you have import or whatever, so.
Yeah, it's an open meeting.
I don't, I don't know why, I don't know why you'd want to be on there, if you don't have to.
All right then.
What they do, once they're done. I'm just, I was trying to resolve a situation before we have it, if by chance Mrs. Whiteside is elected. And, and if you wanna go with the same committee, you know, just have them asked to be reappointed, as far as I'm concerned, or appointed to the new committee.
Correct.
Well, right now, all you're doing is forming the committee, and you can decide who you want on that, when you.
Yeah, so, as soon, that's a good idea. Why don't we just form the committee, seven-member committee, let's do it as a seven-member committee. Let's form it as a seven-member committee, ad hoc committee, and uh, you know, bring it through, uh, make it so that its charter will go through um, the end of the uh, the uh, fall town meeting, right?
Yep, annual fall.
Actually, the fall annual town meeting.
Yep.
All right.
Second.
Okay, all right, and then we can talk about when we find out who wants to be back on, we can discuss the makeup then.
Okay, now what is their, what is their charge? What will their charge be? Is it gonna be?
Same as, same as a charter review committee, just review the charter.
Is it just, is it to report, or is it to present to town meeting changes?
No, they would, they would make, um, they would present changes to us uh, at this point, this committee, not, not the town meeting.
We couldn't dictate that they report to town meeting.
You what?
We could, we couldn't dictate that they report to town meeting.
Right, because uh, we're not, it's not a town meeting committee, so they would be reporting to us, whatever they, uh, whatever they come up with. Then it would be up to us to put it on the, on the charter, on the commit, on the warrant.
Okay, now what about the work that the present charter review committee has done?
Well, I'm assuming if they're all on there, that they'll carry that over, and then they'll ask us to put that on.
Yeah, I believe those articles that they wrote should carry over, uh, and I would assume, bad word to use, that the Board of Select would approve those automatically for the fall annual town meeting, that they've already.
I believe that, I would certainly do that.
Okay. I just, I, I was just trying to get things clarified.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get it. I get it.
Trying to pick up all the loose ends. Correct.
I get it.
So anything they've done to this point, we'll, we'll, we'll go on the town fall meeting, annual. And anything, no, they'll make a report to us.
Correct. I think that's the way it would have to be.
Will we actually write, you know, articles that they want to tell me that we would approve to put on the warrant or not? I think that's the only way it can work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's what they'd be doing. They'd be giving it to us and we'd make the call whether we'd put it on or we didn't, you know? They'd have to make the report to us anyway.
Yep.
That's why I was, I was asking so to see the current one, but.
But I think we should carry over. I think it's a matter of course, we should carry over those. We already agreed that, uh, that we wanted all those articles that they, the few articles that they came up with. I think we agreed to every single one of them. So I don't see why we wouldn't carry those over.
I agree.
Unless somebody's changed their mind about it.
No.
All right. So give me a motion accordingly.
Okay. Um, I move that we form an ad hoc, um, Charter Review Committee to, uh, seven member committee to, um, continue until the fall town meeting.
The end of the fall town meeting.
The end of the fall town meeting.
Annual, annual fall town meeting.
And, uh, you know what?
Second, second, second.
Okay. So motion, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. We had plenty of discussions, so I'll just go for the vote. Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, five zero zero. So now, now they can, uh, they'll call these people, make sure they will still want to be on and then bring it back at another meeting. Okay?
Yes.
Sounds good, sounds good to me. All right. Uh, next up is an accepted donation, the Wareham Council on Aging in the amount of $100 from Maria and Edward Rowley.
Alright, I move that we accept the donation from the Wareham Council on Aging in the amount of $100 from Maria and Edward Rowley.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Uh, any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Peter, uh, Peter?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, five zero zero. Any other town business not reasonably anticipated in the last 48 hours?
Did we do the liquor license?
Did we what? We did it.
Okay.
Did you forget?
It's been a long day.
Yeah, okay. Town administrators report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to let you know some good news. We, we will continue to have representation on the, uh, Steering Committee of the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. This is the third time I've been, uh, elected to the Steering Committee. So it's a good, I think it's a good thing for Wareham and, uh, I appreciate their faith that they've put in, uh, in us to make some good decisions and act on behalf of the groups. The other item is, uh, as you know, there's electronic billboard over on Route 25 from the Robertson's. Uh, we've received an additional, well, the second gift from them of $25,000. And, uh, that's, it's really, it's very generous of them. It's basically 12,500 for each side of the electronic billboard. So, um, we can sum that in for the next, next, uh, session to be accepted as a gift, or you can, you can do it as part of the report. It's up to you as the board. The, what I do want to let you know is if you're coming back, uh, back headed the opposite way on, uh, on 25, you'll notice the trees have grown, grown back up and you cannot see the electronic billboard as much as you used to be able to. So I think they're going to need some help from us with, uh, Mast Dot to see, see how we can get anything going, either take those trees down. Because out of a fairness aspect, if those trees are, stay up, you know, there, there's nobody in their right mind will pay for, uh, advertising on that side, which means our, uh, our gift would probably be cut in half understandably because it's, uh, it's 12,500 per side of the ac, active side of the billboard. So, um, you know, I think we'll, um, they're, they're going to come up with an idea of what needs to be done in order to have a, a better view lane on that. And I think we can, we can help out with Mast Dot and stuff, probably. I see Alan nodding his head. So.
Yeah. We did, when they got the sign originally, I went up to Boston with them, you know, to lobby for the sign and we kept the agreement to allow the trees to be cut, you know, so we'll, we'll be able to do the same thing again. Be happy to go ahead and do it as we've done before.
Okay, awesome. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept the money?
I'll move.
Do it under Town Administrator's Report. So move by Peter, seconded by?
Alan.
Alan. Okay. Any, any discussion about it? A roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes, five zero zero. Okay. Anything else, Derek?
Yeah. I, I want to thank everybody involved, um, with, uh, with getting the, uh, the beaches and, uh, town hall and everything up and running for, uh, reopening from, uh, Mr. Menard and his crew, Gary Buckminster and his staff. And I think people need to realize, I think Gary's act, um, right now is about half capacity, maybe a little less of what he usually has when you include the seasonals. This is a different year. You know, let's, I think it's, without being rude, I think we all need to take a, the step back and, uh, take a deep breath and, and relax. It's, uh, a lot of people went to our, our beaches and other, other places. It was extremely crowded. There's no place else to go. It, and people were just basically released from their homes. We have people we've never seen at our beaches and I can tell you how we know about that because they're bringing giant charcoal grills, dragging them onto the beach, trying to, trying to grill, which has not been allowed since, at least since I've been here. We did not have the parking enforcement. We did not have the kiosks and we'd been getting, uh, you know, uh, you know, some different groups, which is great, um, to the area. They don't know the rules. Uh, I think we were putting, we put up the signage and I think we should do periodic announcements. The, a lot of residents in Onset, I always think of CAT right off the bat, but there's so many more are doing tremendous things. A lot of residents down at Swiss Beach, those that take care of Lowell Harbor as well. So I appreciate all those people stepping up and helping. I think we need to step back and relax and realize this is a, this is a different year. Things are a little crazy right now, uh, to say the least, and we will all get through this.
Okay. All right. Next up is liaison reports. Uh, let's start with Jim.
I want to go back to, um, Town Administrator Sullivan. Um, have we started the, um, kiosk programs and the, uh, for, for parking in Onset or no?
Yes, the kiosks are up now and the, uh, parking enforcement, we just don't, we don't have as many people. We had one person on and usually we use parking enforcement for going around, picking up the trash and such as well. And that's really kicking on, um, we'd anticipate July 1 for most of the park enforcement, uh, regulations, but that's all kicked up now. Um.
Here too.
Yeah. I, I have never, you know, on a June Tuesday, on a June Monday, and even some of these, I haven't seen these beaches that busy before like this. I mean, obviously it's been hot weather that we're not used to either, but there's, I mean, there's not much else to do, especially if you, you've got kids and to bring them to the beach to get, get some energy out of them and such, get them out of the house. So, uh, it's, it's, it's a little, it's a little crazy and, uh, you know, Mr. Buckminster, they're between people trying to swim to Wicket's Island and saving their lives and, you know, uh, trash and other things and, and, uh, going on at the beach. They're, they're spread as thin as can be. And if everybody realizes, well, Mr. Menard's trying to go through to keep, uh, between the cemeteries and everything, get keeping going. It is a, it is a real stressful time and the idea that the town does nothing, doesn't come through or pick up anything, that's, that's inaccurate. So, uh, I know there's a lot of frustrated people.
Hey, what's up?
I appreciate that they're, they're frustrated, which means that they care and that, and that matters. So. And sorry to go off on a, on a tangent.
How about Peter?
Uh, Patrick, we can, you're not muted. So.
Okay. When you said liaison reports, um, we had a meeting, uh, last Thursday regarding.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And, um, again, it was, uh, Weston and Sampson, um, David.
All right. Thank you. Bye.
And, uh, Mr. Sullivan, uh, joined us, um, tele, teleconference. A couple of, uh, suburb, um, officials came in, Bob Belbin and the, uh, uh, he was a, a select person and their town administrator, uh, Rick LaFond. And, um, we met with another, um, another solid waste, um, holler, you know, a large, uh, provider. And, uh, again, I was just going over what they could do for us and, and we're weighing our options. So, um, as I spoke to the importance of, of coming up with something, uh, on, on the agreement. I mean, if we don't do it now, uh, during the summer, then we're really going to be pressed come November. And, um, I, I don't want to be forced into making decisions I'd rather not make because we weren't prepared. That's all.
Okay. All right. Uh, next, Alan.
Uh, okay. First off, I have a meeting on Thursday. We're dealing with the COVID-19 and of course the next wonderful thing is triple E. So the state will be, through MMA, will be providing a seminar discussion on the potential for triple E for the state of Massachusetts, which is something we don't need, but we're going to have to discuss that. Uh, GATRA had their annual, uh, meeting on, on the advisory boards. We had that today with their budget, et cetera. Basically GATRA is taking a very conservative approach financially to the revenues from the state and federal government, also for revenues coming from people using their service and to the fees and stuff they charge the towns. Our, our fees are going to be down from GATRA somewhat as well. So there's a savings there as well for the town. The budget itself will be reviewed come, like everybody else, come October with expected revisions as well. Uh, they are now collecting fees on the buses for a while there. Uh, people could use the buses at no fee whatsoever. So they're back using fees. Uh, they, they ask people to wear masks, but it's not required. And, uh, they also have what we call, you know, the CAS Act that we all have. They also have CAS money and that money is going to help actually offset some of the costs and labor issues, which they're allowed to use in that way. Uh, the next meeting we had today was again, the, uh, local governor advisory council meeting with the MMA. Uh, and of course, as Derek has mentioned, this, the state is allowing, uh, people to late file businesses, et cetera, sales taxes, all the different fees for hotels, et cetera, which means that for the local cities and towns come in July and, uh, you know, July, August, et cetera, our revenues from the state will be down somewhat of what's expected. They will work basically as of today, DLS, uh, director basically said they'll use the 2020, uh, numbers for the first two months of the month, but the other things will be decreased that we normally expect to see it. Uh, and we'll see how it goes. We've got to be very careful and watch what happens there. Uh, on the school side, just as a heads up, uh, Desi is basically has some discussions this week about potential ideas for programs coming from the fall, how to open. Uh, but basically next week, there'll be some firm protocols that's really going to happen because right now, none of the schools really have any idea how things going to work or how they're going to open. And that's a really important thing because we're running late already. I mentioned the tax free weekend already. That's already there. Uh, we discussed the, also people are really clamoring about fireworks. Unfortunately, the state has felt this fireworks display is still not viable at, at this time. So I don't think there's going to be any change there at all. And, uh, I think that's all I have. Like I say, we've been working with the state, county, et cetera, and all this stuff. I'd like to thank Plymouth County in particular. They went and stepped up and took the $90 million for the CAS money and they got lambasted by the state as if they should have done it. They should let the state handle it. And they've done an excellent job taking that money and handling it and getting back to the cities and towns as people apply. Actually, I think they've done a better job than the state on this, getting the money out. And the last piece is that I ran into Gary, I think it was, I think it was yesterday, it was Monday. And I really feel bad because the poor guy is just beside himself with everything going on and how difficult it is and how not understanding people are at all. And, uh, I just hope that we can keep him happy because he's at the breaking point. People need to back away. And of course municipal maintenance is doing work. I don't know how they get, I don't know how they can do it with the staff they have and what's going on. I've never seen so much stuff going on in this town, being as busy as we are and also having people not really caring about what happens inside the town when they come in and they just leave everything behind. It's like a big deal. And I've had people actually ask me, why can't we do this? Why can't we do that? I, I certainly for myself, I'm not going to put seniors, volunteers in a position that they have to deal with, you know, people who are cranky, angry, et cetera, which is the way the world is right now. They have to deal with people telling you, you can't do this, you can't do that. And see these people get into fights. I can't imagine a 70 plus year old sitting there telling someone, you can't do this. And what would be the end of this all? So again, I just ask everybody to please chill out and please understand that we're doing what we can, but we're unprecedented times and we're in an area where everybody's lives have changed. Most people are unhappy because they don't like change. They do, certainly don't like the way they're having to live right now, but they basically have to, excuse my language, suck it up. Thank you.
Okay, Peter?
Uh, well, I spent the last couple of days doing a different kind of liaising, but I'm not supposed to talk about it here. It's all politicking, so.
Mary?
I'm good.
All right. So, uh, I have been involved in a whole lot of meetings the last couple of weeks. Um, one, uh, certainly with the school, the school unions. Uh, as you know, I sit on that committee and, um, yeah, I think they came to a one-year agreement that, uh, fills their bill today. Uh, we'll see when it gets ratified, but I think it's, uh, it's going to work and it's going to be, uh, it's going to be right on budget for what, for what we had, uh, what, what was submitted for a town meeting. So that's, that's some good news for those guys. Um, I got to thank, uh, all the people that are on that negotiating team. They were, uh, pretty good at it. And, uh, Kim, um, I tell you, I can't say enough about her. She's amazing. She did a great job. Um, secondly, I want to talk about, um, uh, the stuff that went on this weekend. Um, the kind of, uh, craziness that happened on the beaches and so on and so forth that was going on and the anger that people seem to have right now. Um, and the, the problems that exist as a result of all of the things that are going around in the country. You know, it's put a lot of pressure on police departments and, uh, put a lot of pressure on us and other things. And I just want to say for one, that I support our police department 110%. I think they do one heck of a job at what they do in a very difficult time right now, when people are treating them with very much disdain, which I just can't stand. Uh, you know, I don't know one person and I might as well talk about the elephant in the room. I don't know one person. I didn't talk to one single person. And I, as you well know, we, we, because we're involved, we talk to hundreds of people a week. And I've not talked to one person who thought that, uh, the thing that happened to Floyd was an acceptable behavior in any manner, shape or form. And that's nothing I would ever see out of our police department. I know that for a fact. I've been around a long, long time, as you all know, and it just doesn't happen. And we have good, solid men out there and I want them to know that I support them and I hope this board supports them 110%.
We do.
Absolutely.
None in women on the department. Absolutely. Sandy said she made them cookies.
And by the way, I, I should, I should also say that, um, Gary's guys deserve the same, by the way, because as you well know, they do a lot of policing activities as well and they deserve the same. And I hope that people will go out there and treat them with respect, listen to what they're telling you. They're all trying to protect you and take care of you. None of them are out there to, uh, cause you any issues or problems. And please stop with all the trash, man. It's a carry in, carry out. Just because you see somebody got a little barrel next to their house or on the side or whatever, doesn't mean that you use that as an excuse to throw. Just because you see somebody got a little barrel next to their house, or on the side, or whatever, doesn't mean that you use that as an excuse to throw all your junk on their barrel. And by the way, you know it won't fit in. I saw one barrel, sitting there, a little barrel, and there was a big, huge, what do you call it? You know, lounge chair that apparently had broken, and it couldn't fit in the barrel, no way. They just threw it on top. I mean, it's just silliness, and it has to stop. Look, everybody can go out and have a good time. I know everybody is dying to get out. They couldn't wait to get out of the house. It's a good thing for them to be out in the sun, but let's take care of each other. Let's take care of the place that we get to use. Let's take care of the town. Let's take care of our stuff. I don't know about you guys, but I do this only because I care about Wareham, because I want to see everything better here, not worse. And it just kills me when I see our own, some of, some of our own people abusing the issue. I mean, let's pay attention, folks. You know, that matters. At least it matters to me, and I hope it matters to everybody else as well. All right, anybody else have anything else to say? All right, let's move on and do the, that wasn't enough?
Not at all, Patrick, you're good.
I got my soapbox. I got to do that. I had this soapbox here in my room, and I had to use it. All right, next up, authorization to sign bills. We don't have any. Rich isn't getting paid. You know, we only have one bill. It's just riches. I don't know how we keep doing that all the time. Okay. Minute, minutes, we have minutes to approve, though.
Yes, I'm going to do these one at a time, because some of us weren't at some meetings and stuff like that, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Start with, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for March 24. I wasn't, oh, wait, I can't make the motion, because I wasn't there, so.
Who was the clerk? Peter?
Peter was.
Uh, Peter was the clerk. So Peter, Patrick, Alan, James, you were all there.
Hey, make a motion. Make a motion to approve the minutes from March 24, 2020.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Jim. Is there any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Mary?
I'm staying.
Okay, so four zero one, next?
And somebody keep track of this, because I'm way down in these attachments here to do these meeting minutes, so make sure I don't miss one. Okay, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for March 31, 2020, and all five of us were present.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Oh, let's see, roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary, Patrick?
Yes.
Okay, five zero zero.
Um, all right.
April 7th.
I move we approve the April 7 meeting minutes, and everyone was there.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
He, Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay, five zero zero. May 26 to 2020.
Move that we approve May 26, and we were all there.
Okay. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? Roll call, Alan?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yep.
Patrick? Five zero zero. Okay, all right, so before we adjourn, I want everybody to know, next week, we'll be meeting in our room, and we'll be reorganizing the board, okay? So that'll be happening next week. Also, again, thank you so much, Mary, for giving your time the last three years. It's been great to have you, and I hope you'll at least poke your head in once in a while and say hi to everybody, and let us know how everything's going.
I will. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Wareham.
Awesome. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Mary is. Motion made by Alan, seconded by?
Mary.
Peter. Roll, roll call, Alan?
Sure.
Jim?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Hey, nobody objected. Last time, we couldn't get anybody to vote. Couldn't get a second last time. Nobody wanted to go. All right, thank you, Wareham. Have a great week.
Good night, Alan. Thank you, everybody.